Right. That's, that's the proposed expansion or growth of our urban growth boundary. If we were to grow some and identify what our primary areas of growth would be. Everything else that you see already exists in our urban growth boundary. So the, the light green, the yellow is where we already are. The blue areas shaded are the areas that we're talking about proposing to expand our urban growth boundary to. So I know the mayor, Commissioner Butler have been involved in some of these discussions. So they may, may be able to kind of chime in on this as well. But in looking at what we can provide city services wise with police and fire currently, where some of our infrastructure growth we anticipate to be, especially after some meetings with the water authority of Dixon County to understand where their proposed areas of growth as far as their service is concerned. So what we have here is just the proposed expansion of our urban growth boundary that we would actually present after this. It's just kind of a talking point discussion. We would need to go through the process of having at least one formal community involvement meeting to make sure that we, we get everyone involved and participate and understand what we're doing. And obviously broader, better discussion points than what you have here tonight. But this is just kind of an open discussion amongst your group of the elected body to kind of see what all of you think. I know this is first blush information for some of you, but it's an item that we're going to have to discuss and the purpose of this is just kind of get you guys' thoughts on what you think about growth generally. So with that, I would kind of defer to the mayor and Commissioner Butler to kind of see what you think and talk through just that specific information.
That we were still within what their scope of what their plan was going to be over the next few years. One of the things about Fairview is that since we are in the western corner, you know, we're not constantly competing. I mean Brentwood, Franklin, Spring Hill, Nolansville. I mean, I think that's going to be lots of problems there with him trying to find out, figure out who's going to go where. And in Tennessee, one of the things that people can do is that, and Mr. Collins, if I'm not repeating this correctly, if you live in Brentwood or close to Brentwood and you decide that you want to be annexed into Franklin, that you want your address to be Franklin, they are required to consider that, correct?
That is correct. There, Williamson County adopted a, actually has gone through the state legislature, but lasso annexation used to be improper, illegal. You cannot lasso annex property, meaning if you had a piece of property that wasn't contiguous to your city, it didn't touch it. And contiguous doesn't mean that you have a property next door to each other. Contiguous can be across the street because you get some question about, do they have to actually, do property lines touch? They don't. Contiguous means generally can they, can they do that? So across the street would be able to be annexed if you had annexed the street, right? So that's how you get there. There are some things that have to be worked through with that. The, the urban growth boundary is kind of an odd discussion for Williamson County in, in the fact that we're required to have an urban growth boundary and that urban growth boundary be a part of the greater county map as far as urban growth boundaries. But there is a provision in the law that municipalities in Williamson County can lasso annex. In fact, the law states that if someone attempts or requests a lasso annexation or annexation that's not contiguous, that that must be considered by the governing body. So there's some question mark, and we had this discussion at one of these meetings as to who is the governing body as it relates to an annexation. Meaning, let's assume that, that the city decides that the white, blue shaded area, we want to be our urban growth boundary. And I, and from all of our meetings with staff, the mayor, Commissioner Butler, we all agree that is a preferred urban growth area for us. That simply makes good sense for us to plan. Question becomes, if someone comes in and they are two miles outside of this, they aren't touching anything, it, the law states that that annexation request must be considered by a governing body. In this case, the governing body is the Board of Commissioners. So the question mark in this is where does the city's planning commission fall in as a part of that? Now, it's a broader discussion that we don't have to decide here. So the question is, if someone wants to annex and they're outside of this footprint, does it go directly to the Board of Commissioners? Because the law clearly says that the governing body shall consider that request. The property owner has the right to demand that that consideration be made. So once we get into those, if we get into those, we'll have to address those separately. But as far as the preferred growth boundary, what we know we can sustain for growth, provide services through, particularly with our partners of, with Dixon, Dixon Water, is the blue area shaded that you see.
This does not mean that, that we're going to want to just suddenly start building and, and this is proposed. This is not going to be something that's going to happen next year.
Correct. So, so in this, you would still, all things being equal, they would still have to be contiguous. They would still have to meet the standard thresholds for an annexation to come into the city. But as a city, the city agrees that given our ability to grow, provide services or other things, the city would effectively be agreeing that these limits that you see on these boundaries would be the limit to where the city would reasonably expect to be able to provide services and reasonably expect to consider annexations, where we would typically desire to grow. So we're, as the mayor pointed out, we're in a little bit different situation than some of the other cities in the county because we don't touch any other city in the county. So these urban growth boundaries get really delicate when you're talking about neighboring cities who could encroach on each other. Given the fact that we can't really encroach on another city in the county, we're given some leeway in that. We're not going to compete with City of Franklin for urban growth area as we see outlined in the blue, but we may want to consider our ability to ensure to the best we can future services in that area. And I think that's really where our discussion lies is where do we want to grow, where, what makes the most sense, and then where could we reasonably expect to provide those services?
Mr. Collins, we can annex outside of the urban growth boundary, correct?
Can. The, the state law requires that you consider it if someone requests it.
Okay. And if we do develop this urban growth boundary and we, and we lock into that, does that, what, what does that do for us? So if we lock into that, the, if we say those light blue areas are our new urban growth boundary, and let's say another city wants to annex in that area, can they not do that because that is part of our urban growth boundary?
I think that's part of the broader discussion that we're, we're having with Williamson County for all of those. So there, there is this, there's this direct conflict between the state code that requires every county in the state to have these urban growth boundaries defined and the local legislation for Williamson County that requires municipalities to consider annexation of non-contiguous property. So with that, you could, under the, under what's passed here, these would be, these would be effectively intergovernmental, unwritten, unspoken agreements that if Franklin were to border this area some, somewhere, we wouldn't, we wouldn't annex a piece of property if it was currently in the Franklin urban growth boundary, right? That's what this is. That's kind of the, the basic agreement between the organizations. But with that, and Williamson County agrees and the attorneys agree, and we have all been through this thing, that there still would be a mandate by the local act that if someone came in and said they wanted to, to move their, or have their property annexed into the City of Fairview, then they can request that thing. You can request it even if it's in the Franklin urban growth boundary, the Brentwood, Nolansville urban growth boundary. There's nothing that prevents anyone from coming in and requesting that the city annex any property in the county. Now, obviously, if it's already incorporated, you have a de-annexation question that comes into play, but that will be with the property owner and where they're currently annexed. But, but yes, it's a, it's an odd pairing and everyone in the part, everyone in the, in this process agrees it's a very odd pairing.
So it, it doesn't sound like it secures anything in stone. It gives the, the planning commission one more tool in their toolbox to say, yes, this is in our urban growth boundary if, if we want to annex or whatever. So it's kind of like our comprehensive plan or 240 comprehensive plan. This is what we want to do. This is where we want to grow, but it doesn't lock us into anything and it doesn't lock out another city from annexing within our growth boundary.
Correct. Yes. It's, it's, it's a, it's an odd, it's an odd marriage for sure. Now, what this does give you the ability to do is if someone were to come in and be non-contiguous, they don't touch anything else, but they're in the blue shaded area and the city has adopted that as our urban growth boundary, I think you do have the freedom to annex that property within the blue proposed urban growth boundary, even though it doesn't touch anything. Because by adoption of the urban growth boundary, you agree that we will be acceptable to growth in this area. So we're not saying that it would have to touch anything. We're just saying if it's in this blue area, we'd be acceptable to annexing it, all things being equal and it meets the needs. Now, I think it does give you some cover. If someone comes in and they're outside of this blue area, they're in the, the white area, the unincorporated area of the county, and they come and say, we want to be annexed into the City of Fairview, and the law clearly is on their side that the City of Fairview must consider that annexation request, then I think the city could rely on the fact that we appreciate your interest in being within the city limits of the City of Fairview. However, you're outside of our urban growth boundary and we're not prepared to offer city services or whatever the, this will be in that time. So, so i- is it kind of a, it's an unintended consequence that that's a protection against unincorporated area annexation, but it certainly gives you the ability to do that. But for us, when we're looking at, okay, where do we want to grow? And we can go back and have discussions because we will have to have these in, in earnest discussions with the water authority, maybe some other utilities as it relates to, do we want to partner and provide water, sewer, whatever in these areas to facilitate this growth? Not saying we do or don't, but some of these areas, particularly 840 corridor, is an excellent opportunity for the city to grow and it's on our doorstep. That intersection is great for us. So I think you can go back and if this were to be adopted, then go back and say, we know this is in our urban growth boundary. We expect to grow in this area. We want to engage in these partnerships. It's a little easier than it being in an unincorporated area, having to have that discussion.
I had one other question. When we start looking at this, this, this growth boundary, and, and we do have the luxury of not having another city close to us, what about, or what does that look like in counties? So, you know, we, we do border two other counties, three other counties. So i- is that permissible for us to annex in other counties and have our growth, urban growth boundary go into another county?
So you could annex into another county. Your urban growth boundary would be specific to Williamson County.
Okay.
The example would be Spring Hill, right? Spring Hill's in Maury County, as I say it, Murray County, everybody else around here says it. So for, for purposes of sounding local, Spring Hill's in Murray County and, and Williamson County. So with, with that, Williamson County, what we adopt as an urban growth boundary in Williamson County would not govern what takes place in Hickman County if we went across the line. That may be a whole other, a whole other conversation. So how, how that would work, I don't know, but your municipality can be in counties.
Right. Okay.
And just for the ones that might not know this, because I did not know this until I got elected to this position, that Williamson County has lots of rules that do not necessarily apply to other counties in the state. So there's those things also to consider.
So the primary discussion for this is looking at our, at our growth and we'll do a kind of a broader, more formal presentation once we get to the point for there. But I, I think, I know staff, again, the mayor, Commissioner Butler, from the planning side, we've all kind of sat down and gone through this, and what we see is the blue shaded area clearly makes sense for us to, to identify without question from a growth boundary standpoint. Now, what happened outside of that, we don't have the ability to, to govern those things or police that, but this makes sense for us from every, from every opportunity that we have, including providing public services to there. In this case, today, it's police and fire, but forever is a long time. Five years now, that could be a garbage service, trash service, who knows what that, what that looks like. So, and if we were to partner with the water authority of Dixon County for any improved services, particularly sewer along the 840 corridor or 100 to 840, I think it would be helpful for us to go back and say that we have adopted this area as our urban growth boundary and we expect to partner in those areas to see that growth.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I have two cents, right? So the green area is our current area. The yellow is, was the, over 20 years ago implemented as the future urban growth area. So you can kind of see over 20 years ago what was identified and is, is not adjusted a lot. So like the mayor said earlier, this blue stuff is a long-term, we may never see it. It's just kind of allows our planning staff, our, our community, our utility districts to start planning for future growth and how it's going to accommodate, how we're going to create services in, in our long-term vision. And that dedicated area there, the 840 corridor was, even in our growth study, was a concentrated area for future growth. And so being able to service and identify that area is, is critical. This was all kind of initiated by the county trying to set the standards, brought all the cities to, every municipality is reviewing their growth boundaries right now. Mr. Dawson, for similar to what you said, to try and set that boundary and that standard of, of an overreach between municipalities or if the county is trying to plan long-term, they know where they can put their, their different areas and, and identify their future growth.
There's a definite timeline also that the state requires. So I think that we want all of this to be done early 2022, preferably end of December this year.
The, the pink areas on the northeast are, are removal of the future urban growth boundary. I, I think from discussions, it just was kind of felt it was a, a give and take if you're going to identify areas where you want to try and concentrate, maybe identify some areas that are going to be less desirable long-term. And from a utility use, from a road use, from an access use or, or developable areas, those northeast properties, a little heavier topography, a little farther out, and didn't seem like they could be serviced in, in the future use.
So yellow and green are?
Green is current City of Fairview. Yellow is current urban growth boundary and blue is new proposed urban growth boundary. Pink is removed urban growth boundary, proposed, removed.
So what is the, okay, tell me yellow again.
Yellow is our current urban, urban growth boundary. So current identified areas of future growth for Fairview.
But we're in the green completely.
Green is, is annexed and part of city, yep, city lines.
Okay. So current, yellow, but the, so blue is long-term, but.
Blue would be the new addition.
Sort of yellow, but more further out.
Right. Blue would be the new additions to yellow.
So blue would turn yellow if we approved this.
Right.
And oddly enough, blue and yellow make green.
Thank you.
One day they'll mix.
Just saying, for what it's worth.
Who made this matter?
No one asked about what color.
Just saying. That's how we, that's how we got there.
I must have worn my Diet Coke.
It does. Does he disagree?
We're so proud that you have such skill. I feel like I'm at Sesame Street. So why did we, if, if we have yellow everywhere surrounding this pink, and Brendan, I know you just now said that, but so why have we, that's the county line, correct? The Davidson County line?
The north side of, yeah, B would be Dixon and.
What if it be Chatham County?
And Dixon.
In the top right.
Is that Kingston, Kingston roads right here?
Yep.
And, and most of what would be removed, just simply relates to the ability to provide public services, that's just, that's just too much of an overreach to really anticipate, expect to be able to do that. Now, who knows what that looks like 20 years from now, but trying to plan for the next 20 years, we know that we're just not going to be able to successfully do that under the best circumstance. So.
So what is, here's, here's the Davidson County line. I'm talking to myself now. Okay.
Up Highway 100, where all that new clearing was done, is that anything that we're considering?
I believe the annexation of the, that property that's in the Williamson County boundary was approved for annexation.
Yes, the 23 acres.
That's correct.
Was that the green here?
Right.
And obviously where that, where that straight line is that just runs border, borders if that's where the county line ends, so that, that's where we, we are. But yes, we did extend out to the county line on that annexation.
Like Mr. Collins said, this allows us to focus on areas, invest in capital improvements, invest in long-term, you know, planning and, and make accommodations appropriately to make sure that we're prepared over the years, whether it be two years or 40 years.
In 20 years, we'll have to do this again.
So again, we're required to do it. So as a part of that requirement, it just seemed to, everyone sit down and figure out, okay, let's see what really makes sense and, and understanding where, where we really are today. Part of the, part of the difference in this being done 20 years ago, which I think is the big, the biggest driving factor in reconsidering some of the pink area up there is 20 years ago, the city had its own sewer system. So you could have at that time included that as part of your preferred area for growth, given that we don't have that anymore, then we have to kind of go back and figure out what makes sense for us as it relates to other city services that we can control. And I think the general discussion was from a growth standpoint, benefit for the city, we would gladly trade the areas in the pink at the top for the areas in blue, particularly as it relates to the interstate, 840 and 100. And just the trade-off of that clearly offers a greater benefit at the 840 intersection. So, so again, nothing that has to be decided tonight, but we will need to do this in at least one formal community involvement meeting, which we would have obviously broader information and presentations that were easily digestible to the public. You hadn't seen this or not be so familiar with, with, but we just kind of want to get everyone's thoughts, concerns as you, as you look. It's, it's a big deal. This, this as it relates especially to 840 is, is big for us. And if we ever get sewer at that intersection of any, of any capacity, that, that, that intersection will take off and we know that.
So do we have our public meeting scheduled?
We have, we have a work session again for two weeks from tonight, which will broadly advertise that we're, we're doing this. And then it seems to make the most sense to have the public involvement meeting on December 18th to, to really engage that and make sure we're doing. And obviously before that time, we would advertise the map, the intent, all of those things to make sure that we're, we're getting that working out. So if that schedule works, then is amenable to, to the staff, and we will do that community involvement meeting during the regular BOC meeting.
Is there anything else?
No, ma'am, not related to this, not for me.
So does that mean we're finished early with our workshop?
We did, but can we, can we take a couple of minutes to go over one other thing on that workshop?
So, you, sorry, you said public involvement session on November 18th?
December, the second meeting in December. I apologize, which I may have sent the, I may have sent the 18th, but I'm not sure that's the date.
You said December.
So it'd be, it'd be December, it'd be December 16th.
Sixteen, okay. I just, I just want to get it, yeah. Sixteenth, December 16th.
So with that, a follow-up to something that was discussed at the last work session, which I just need to kind of, let's talk this thing just real quickly and make sure we're on the same page or figure out what that page would be. And that is items related to the playground specifically. The, we talked about fencing last time, some bricks, some other things that, where we were, and I just need to get an idea of kind of how we want that to work because obviously we're, we're progressing on that project pretty quickly, a little more quickly than we thought. So my first question is it relates to the fencing itself. How we want to propose trying to generate those funds? Is that going to be something that the city does as far as a collection point on the city's website? How do, or, or not? Or how do we, how do we think we want to make all of that work? Obviously, I don't have the, the total cost estimate for the fence, but if people are going to purchase fence pickets for all of those things and advertise that and do that work, is that something that we want the committee to do? Is that something to coordinate for that? Is that something that we want, excuse me, city staff to do as a part of those collections? And I'm open to either. I'm just trying to figure out where we would be as it relates to the fencing and the collection of that. Because we need to get some, some activities that take place as far as how we, how we do that. Again, I think the, the preferred method for that would be we would have a link to a website where whoever wants to purchase can go on, see that item. If they decide they want to purchase one of those things, they will be able to do that and it would take them to a third-party collection point. So let's say that the fence picket is $15 and we're selling them for $30, then at the point of sale, the, the equipment provider would get paid their $15 for the picket and we would get, we would collect $15 as a part of the donation, right? Much like you do a campaign tee-shirt. If, if you're, if you're running a, a campaign and you're selling tee-shirts for your campaign, you direct them to a third-party website, they click on there, I want a large tee-shirt, it's $20, but that, when they make that purchase, the cost of the tee-shirt goes to the tee-shirt company and the campaign donation goes to the campaign fund, similar to that. So again.
Yeah, I think if the staff, if our staff can take it on, I think that would, we would charge city with taking it on. That way we make sure we have enough materials, we have enough pickets ordered and put it on our website and order from there.
I think the discussion of the, of Mr. Potter and all those items were if we were going to have this done through a third-party, third-party. So if this, in that instance, we would have had the Friends of Bowie Nature Park website directing someone else to a website to purchase something where those dollars would then go to the Friends of Bowie and the provider and then later remitted to the city. But it just seems easier as a part of that if we've decided this is what we're going to do to eliminate that, that step and have them go on and we just, we do that thing. So we're fine, we're trying to set that up, there's no issue. We'll be glad to get with a vendor and see how that works. But I'm just trying to get my head around, are we doing this as a part of the city doing this or are we going to contractually partner with someone else? My preference would be we do it.
I think it would be simpler to just.
So in that, the, the city actually contracts with that company, but that link can be shared on anybody's website, right? So that website is the contract between the city and the, the manufacturer of that fence post. And whenever there is a sale, that money goes to that contractor into the city. That link though can be on anybody's website, correct?
The link would probably be on our website.
Well, it would link it back, that, that third party is where the, the money exchange and everything takes place, correct?
Correct. Someone's on the city's website, buy here, buy now, they hit it. So if, if the, let's say the Friends of Bowie Nature Park wanted to be a part of this thing, then what they would have to do is put on their website a link to that page on our website.
Okay. It's my understanding that this was a, this manufacturer had a link to their, to their, to their website.
to their website to where they would actually purchase it. That way, they would be collecting the money and then just giving us a, a part of that, whatever, whatever that money would be. Is that right?
I, I think that I understood that they also use some sort of third-party so that you could, the money separated at point of sale.
Yes, for us, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out who's driving this bus.
Yep, we're, we're contracting with the manufacturer of those fence posts or whatever, the, the fencing company?
So here's how, here's how we would do it.
Okay.
Right, so let's say that we, we want to do this thing, and I want to buy a fence picket. And this contractor has said that the cost to the city for those is $15, right? So I could purchase this thing, and a fence picket will say Scott Collins, and I pay $15 for that thing, right? So what we would do would be, we would sell them for 30, right? As a donation process. So on our website, we would have something where you can click on there, and all you know is you're buying a $30 fence picket, right? Behind the scenes, that $30 is divided up, 15 to them, 15 to us, and that order goes to, to that, to that site.
Yep.
So if I'm answering?
Either way, yeah. I, I thought that, that fencing company had, had a website that you could go there and, you know, it would say, it would ask you, what do you want on this fence post? And you would say, I want Rod Dawson on this picket. You would pay your $30. They would, they would make that transition, transaction. They would shoot the city $15, they would keep the other $15, and it'd be done.
Same process, only thing we're talking about is, if that's the case, then that company's hosting that buy here versus us hosting the buy here. We just want to make sure that we are directing the city's portion of the dollars to the city and not to a third party.
That's right.
For the city. So have we arrived at that? If the, if the fencing company does that, and they have that in place already, then we would just simply have a link on their website to their, to their site.
Which then the friends could have a link, everybody could have a link. That, that would be, you know, it would say Bowie. That link would be basically to get a, a picket.
It would, when, when the, all there will be, would be a click, a link to that webpage.
That's right.
But so anyone could do that, if they wanted to save that and put it on their website, for sure. No question. The more the better, I think. So, but that's, that's how we want to kind of figure that. So we'll get on that pretty quickly and see how that goes and get that out. There'd been some discussion about trying to have a, have this thing done between November 5th and December 5th for a 30-day window for that. And I don't, I, I think we should do this through probably April, right? However long it takes them to manufacture these.
Or to sell the number of pickets we need, yeah.
So I, I think, I think we would go through and figure out, if there's a 30-day manufacturing, whatever the time is from the last order through installation, we need to figure out what that is, cut it off at that window, and then go from there. We'll, we'll figure out what that is and get that out pretty quickly. So, and then the last component of that is, is relates to purchasing things, not designing things. But the brick discussion that, that we had, I just need to figure out, because that's a separate, that's a separate thing as well.
Before we, before we dive into brick, like a, a monument or a sponsor wall, it would be separate, designing something like that. So make sure that we have it on opening day or whatever, where we have the higher sponsor. And the bricks would be, have always been a separate component or discussion or whatever. So just making sure the monument wall is something that's designed or, or planned to be there. So that way it's there for everyone that, that paid this much on the day one.
So the setup would be, you have the, someone's, someone has donated money to the playground, whatever that thing is, and it's a commitment to the playground for made there. Then that would be on the recognition wall or recognition feature when you enter the playground. So that would be one recognition of straight-up donors to the park for money that we've already collected for donations to the playground.
So can we task the city with that design or?
I prefer the city.
Yes, that's what, that's, you're taking, here's, there's the ball.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So the second component of that, so, so let's say we have those donors know, and we know what that is, we figure out what that looks like. So, so now that, that recognition feature is complete and set aside. And I, I guess it will be part of the fencing as you enter, you walk up and see this thing, right? So the second component of that would be separate from that recognition wall would be a second fundraising effort for construction of the fence, where that's where people would go in and purchase their recognition for the fencing, right? So if, so if I went in and bought a $30 fence picket that has my name on it, I would not also be included on the recognition feature walking in, because that is a fundraising effort for the fence, not a fundraising effort for the playground. So you have those separate recognitions. Would be my, just kind of thinking this thing through. And then lastly was the, the brick, and there was a discussion of selling of bricks or pavers is another part of that. And I'm not sure how we would, how we would do that. We have old pavers that was, that were used at the old playground. And then we're, we're looking for a listing of the, everyone who, who purchased bricks 22 years ago. We think we have an, an, an all-inclusive list, but we're not sure about that. So as close as we can get, because not all of the bricks were, were recovered. I mean, after 20 years, you have a third of them that were broken, damaged, all that thing. So then the question will be, do we go back and attempt to recreate the bricks that no longer exist? Right, Rod Dawson gave, bought a brick 25 years ago, that brick no longer exists. We go back and inventory the bricks that we have? Would we go back in and recreate those bricks and attempt to and use those in some other feature? Or would you take that, that letter or that thing that you got and kind of do a recognition feature for the previous playground, the original? So you can memorialize everyone who invested previously? So in, in that instance, you wouldn't necessarily have pavers or bricks. You would have a recognition area for the original playground. This is who, this is who purchased or invested in the original playground as kind of one feature. A larger feature for the investors or donors for the playground current. And then the fence, you know? The only reason I say that is if we, we're going to have to either recreate bricks that don't exist and find a way to use all of those pavers in some feature, or find another way to recognize everyone who, who bought those bricks at the time without being offensive for bricks that don't, are no longer there. So I'm just, because, because my fear is, if we're going to, what's going to get lost in this is, if we're, if we go into, and I know we have a lot to do, I'm sorry. Okay, my, my fear for all this thing is, we're going to get lost in some of this design if we're trying to figure out what's a recognition for the new playground? What are funds to be generated for fencing for the new playground? And then selling pavers for an unknown feature? Recreating pavers that have been destroyed and incorporating the new and the old in an unknown feature that we, that we don't have? And I think really, from what I've heard, the overall effort in this is to make sure that no one's effort in the previous playground or the new one is lost.
Well, and like, if, I think if we had something that just, you know, listed who was involved in the beginning somehow, and then if we could get that list and publish it, and if anybody is missing off that list, they can make us aware so that we don't miss someone. So that way, they can go through the list, and they can say, wait a minute, my, you know, I was involved, but my name was left off. So that way, we don't miss anybody.
So then, then what, then you would have kind of a original playground or whatever we call it, whatever it was at the time, because it wasn't Treehouse Playground at Bowie Nature Park, whatever it was at the, and it could just have been the Bowie Park Playground, whatever it is. And just have something that recognizes, if they purchased a brick or their name was there, we make sure we memorialize that in some central, some central identifier. Then you'd have the fence pickets that were purchased that would enhance the fence that we do. And then obviously the larger donors for the new playground, be recognized in that, in that way as well.
And maybe a picture of the old one, you know, and then everybody who donated to the older, the old one?
Yeah, that's a good idea, a picture of the old playground with the list.
Something to try to, to piece in, so, so we're not, because my fear is we're going to get lost in all these smaller donation efforts and fundraising efforts that something's going to be half-done. And what, what I want to make sure is, 20 years from now, people are able to recognize who made investments in that park 20 years ago. At that point, that's 50 years, right? So how do, how do we do that and make it where it's, it's kind of fitting of, of what we're trying to accomplish? So that's, my question is, if we're going to sell the bricks, I think we'll now identify that. If we're not going to do those, I think we focus on the fence and then a recognition of those previous bricks and how we identify those, those donors, and do it in such a way where it fits, the, kind of the, the, that thing. We certainly don't want to overlook anyone, we want to make sure they're appreciated, but not so much that we're, we're kind of short one effort for another, or both. Because at this point, I think the preference will be people buy fence pickets. Go through that, go through that thing, so. And then lastly, only thing I have is, as it relates to agenda item 8A planning report, I need to remove that for, for tonight. And Michael will be here the next meeting, we'll get that, get that installed. 8A. And I think as a part of that, we can simply, when we get to 11B, because we just, 8A is gone, bless you.
Bless you.
When we get to 11B, we can just recap what we just discussed about the fence and, and that work, and we should be okay on that. Because we, at that point, we wouldn't have to have the third-party, third-party agreement. Okay?
All right, you, you're short.
Sorry, there's a lot going on. No, no, I'm, I'm all good. So, yes, ma'am. And thank y'all for all that. I know it's a lot of work, there's a lot going on, but it's all good. So we're in a, in a really good spot. So I guess we'll take a five-minute. Ready?